We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, October the 2nd, 2025. So I'll call this meeting to order and we'll ask our invitation to be done by the Overseer, Priscilla Quinn of Ephraim International Community Church and Outreach Services. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation. I'll ask you to come forward, please.
Good afternoon. Okay, ma'am, we all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, source of all wisdom and grace, we gather today as this legislator of Douglasville. May we pause to acknowledge the diversity within this legislature. Today is Yom Kippur in our Jewish community. Yom Kippur is the day of holiness that the Jewish people recognize. The entire country of Israel shut down to focus on fasting, praying, and forgiveness. The legislature of Douglasville is grateful for the opportunity to serve the residents of this community. As we humbly ask for your guidance in all our deliberation, as they undertake the important works before them, we pray for clarity of thought and purity of intention. Help them to set aside personal agendas and to approach each decision with an open mind and a heart dedicated to the common cause. May they listen carefully to one another, respectfully diverse outlook, and seeking understanding above all else. Grant them the wisdom that will foster a vibrant and thriving city for all, inspiring them to consider the needs of every individual, from the most vulnerable to the most prosperous, to strive for equality and justice in every policy they put in place. Give them the courage to change any policy, procedure, or legislative rule that will hinder the growth of the city. May their discussion be branded by integrity, courage, with a genuine spirit of teamwork. Help them to remember that they are here to build up, not to tear down, but to unite and not to divide. I pronounce a protective blessing upon the city, the resident, the business, and the organization. May their effort here today contribute to a stronger, safer, and more prosperous future for everyone who called Douglasville their home. In all things, may their work reflect a commitment to Douglasville's resident who voted them in because they trust them with their community. Amen, and so shall it be. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Overseer Quinn, we appreciate the invocation. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. This is a legislative work session. This work session is where agenda items are presented for discussion only this evening. No official action will be taken tonight, but official action will be taken on these items next Monday during our voting meeting that will be held at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda items, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting and the business that we're here for. I ask that you would listen closely so there will be no misunderstandings about how tonight's meeting will be conducted. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the chambers, the premises this evening. Only one person speaking out of time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation in the audience when you're at the podium. When you're at the podium, please direct all of your comments and concerns to myself or the committee chairperson that is conducting that particular item. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the public hearings and we are not required to accept public comments, other items that are not on that docket for that particular public hearing. We will maintain order. As the chair of the meeting, at any time during the meeting, I am prepared to stop the public comments for any agenda item if things get out of hand. This is how the legislate or the meeting will be conducted. We'll ask the chairperson, we'll read that agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Then myself and council members will possibly ask questions. After that, the committee chairperson, if it's a public hearing, will ask for statements from the audience. There'll be 20 minutes for those that are in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those that are in opposition of those public hearing items. And each person has five minutes to speak. So in totality, one side gets 20 minutes for you for it, 20 minutes for those that are against it. When you come to the podium, there are some cards outside or a piece of paper. You should fill that information out and give it to our Assistant City Manager, CFO, Ms. Callen over to the left. She'll give it to the clerk's office and we will put the information in the official record. Only one person speaking out of time and you have one opportunity. It's not a question and answer format or debate. If we're able to give you the information at the end of the meeting, we will do that. If not, staff will address you after the meeting and provide the information to you. I believe that's it. We, during the comments for citizens and delegates, we will not address zoning items that were discussed during the public hearings for each zoning application. The time to address those comments, we're doing the citizens' comments section of the public hearing. So in other words, during the Georgia State Zoning Procedures Act, if you have any concerns or comments during the zoning portion of public hearing, bring that information at that time. When it's time for citizens and delegates, we ask that you will not regurgitate or bring that information back up. You have your opportunity to speak on the zoning items at the time of the zoning hearing. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off so they will not be disruptive. We'll handle each agenda item and the chairperson will take that item. If there's any business at this time, those are all the procedures, policies and procedures moving forward. So I will adjust the agenda and we'll go to item number 16 first and then we'll go back through the rest of the items. So 16 is Transportation Committee and that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And for allowing me and our councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to go first.
Yes, ma'am.
We have one item under Transportation this evening and it reads as follows. Authorize the mayor to sign the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, which is also known as the LMIG, application for road maintenance in the amount of $471,054.79. And our staff, Mr. Todd Desdough.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Todd Desdough, Public Services Department, 8145 Cedar Mountain Road. I won't go over my whole presentation from earlier, so tonight we're essentially seeking your authorization to apply for this grant, the 2026 LMIG grant from GDOT in that amount, $471,054. Sorry, $54.79. This has a 30% match attached and we are also included the project list, which is 41 streets, 10.34 miles. We're estimating this to be a $4 million project, thereabouts. The only thing that I would add from before that I did not mention in my earlier presentation, this is just for the grant application, so that project list that we've sent you is just tentative. We feel that it's a good, robust list. It's what we would like to go with, but if you get feedback from your residents, your constituents, if there's something you see that you would like to tweak or change, we're happy to have that conversation with you. Just reach out to Director Burdan.
Thank you so much. And this was discussed and thank you to our Vice Chair, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a question to Mayor Robinson, who's on ARC and Ms. Hampton. This $471,000, this is federal dollars, correct? Is this money already there?
It's state. It's the one that is provided through the Georgia Department of Transportation every year?
Right. So, yeah, the reason why I asked the question is with the federal government being shut down, I just wanted to make sure this money was already allocated. So it's not an application that, it's what we do every year, pretty much.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So I would, are there any questions by our mayor and council? If not, I'd like to request that this be put on the consent agenda. All right. Thank you. All right. That's all, Madam Mayor, under Transportation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley. We'll go back to the order in which the agenda is printed, so we'll go now to item number five. We do not have any announcements or presentations. That was number four, so five is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Economic Development Committee has no business at this time.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight. Item A is Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 General Fund Budget, and Ms. Campbell will be handling this.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Heather Campbell, Accounting Manager, 6695 Church Street. This First Amendment is the Fourth Quarter General Fund Budget Amendment for FY '25. So we are working on closing out FY '25 for the audit and lining up the budgets for those lines. After everything nets together for this amendment, we'll be adding $1.4 million to contingency. The largest increase in revenues will be for interest income and we'll be adding $726,000 to that line. And expenses, the largest increase in expenditures is for Jesse Davis Park staff needed for the new buildings and all the new, everything going on here. Also in revenues, we're increasing property tax by $396,000, building permits by $377,000, but we are decreasing West Pines revenues based on actuals. Overall, the total revenue increase will be $1.7 million. In expenditures, we're increasing the City Clerk's Office Group Insurance Line by $16,000. For the Customer Service Department, we're increasing all the personnel lines by a total of $30,000. And that is because when the fiscal year started, the Customer Service Department is, didn't exist when we were budgeting. It was a new department, so once it was started, we didn't have a budget for it. So we're just increasing it for that position because there's only one position there. In Park Administrations, we're increasing the budget by $85,000 in total, and that's for the salary and benefits for the Operations Manager. Jesse Davis Park, the total for personnel is $119,000, and that's for salary and benefits as well. In Youth Programs, we're increasing by $38,000 for staffing and $12,000 for supplies needed. So the total increase is $1.7 million. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any questions or comments?
I have a question about increasing property taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
So with the vote on the millage rate, is this is increasing what we voted on?
So this one doesn't have anything to do with that one? This one was for the previous year and we were just increasing it up to the actuals of what we received from the county for property taxes.
What you received from the county?
Correct. So this doesn't relate so much to the millage rate? This is basically the income that we've received.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Jerry?
Go ahead.
My math can be a little slow sometimes. I'm trying to add up quickly the, what you've got under expenditures doesn't appear to add up to $1.7 million. What, is there other adjustments that are made for accounting purposes that, I know you have to balance things out?
Right. Yes, sir. Everything does match up. The revenues and expenditure equal out to each other. We don't put everything like on the memo, but everything should be on the spreadsheet that's attached.
Okay. So it's, the rest of the information is on the spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay. That's just the highlights?
Yes, sir. We usually try to hit the big ones.
Because that's what people can see. Okay, good. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You'll bring your calculator next time.
I can do it all. My head.
All right. Any other questions on this item? I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday, if that's okay with council.
Looks like it's a go.
Okay. All right. Let's move to item B, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2025-2026 General Fund Budget. Ms. Campbell?
All right. So this amendment is for this fiscal year. It's primarily to roll over encumbrances from FY '25 for projects or items that were not completed in FY '25. After everything nets together, the contingency line will be increased by $526,000. The largest revenue change will be for the funds from FY '25 rolling over, and that's $2.76 million. And then for Jesse Davis Park, they received a check from the American Heart Association to purchase some new AED machines for Jesse Davis Park, so we're increasing the revenue for that. And then building permits, we're increasing by $800,000 based on actuals. They've been busy already this year. So in total, we're increasing the revenues by $3.5 million. For expenditures, between City Manager's Office and Human Resources, they'll net out to zero, but they moved a part-time receptionist position from HR to City Manager's Office. So those cancel each other out. We are also decreasing Buildings and Grounds Abatements Line by $50,000 to increase in engineering, $50,000 for the ordinance relating to driving golf carts on city roads. And non-departamental, we're adding $250,000 to be distributed to departments for group insurance or health insurance. Park maintenance, we're increasing by $26,000 to cover the difference in wages for two new facility operations managers. Two other positions were defunded for this position, but there was still a slight difference, so that offsets that total. And then $2.76 million will be going to various departments for encumbrances for the prior fiscal year. So that will increase the expenditures by $3.5 million. And I can answer any questions again.
That $800,000 for the building permits, that's projected, correct?
That's projected for the rest of the fiscal year, but they have already basically reached their budget for revenues for this fiscal year.
So Mr. Gray and his group are staying pretty busy over?
Yes, sir. Very busy.
All right. Any questions or comments on this item? Mayor Pro Tem, how's the math on this one? Is it good?
It's good. There was a two-cent difference I came up with, but that's other than that as well.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'd like to place this item on the consent agenda also for Monday. All right. Item C, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Hotel Motel Tax Fund Budget. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this one is also primarily to roll over encumbrances from FY '25. The majority of it is for the conference center renovation. A portion of it was budgeted in FY '25, but since it started a little later, we're transferring that money to FY '26. And then there is also a $110,000 increase for CPS for the conference center renovation project as well, for overseeing that.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Campbell on this item? All right. I'd like to place this item on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for all that information. Item D, authorize the mayor to sign all documents to effectuate the purchase of 6709 and 6713, Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia 30134, mean, AKA parcel numbers 0016015C013 and Collectively, the properties from POS Solutions, Inc., and authorize the city staff to take all actions as may be necessary to complete the purchase of the properties. And Ms. Miranda Jordan will handle this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, and Mr. Chair. Miranda Jordan, Staff Attorney, 6695 Church Street. This item accompanies the item that you all approved back in August, approving the city to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with PO Solutions for the properties as mentioned by the chair. And this item will confirm that the city can move forward with the transaction, which is scheduled to close next Friday, and that the mayor can sign all closing documents for that purpose.
Any comments or questions? No comments or questions? All right. Thank you. Can I place, can I place this for non-consent? All right.
It's up to you. If it looks like it's good.
Place this on the consent agenda? And Madam Mayor, thank you, Ms. Jordan. That's all we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Watts. Mayor Pro Tem, I will ask you for the next three committees. I'll name all three of them and then you can tell me if you have some business. Housing and Community Affairs, Legislative and Intergovernmental, Personnel and Organization Committees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have absolutely no business under the Housing and Community Affairs Committee, nor the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, nor the Personnel and Organization Committee.
Okay. One breath. Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening.
Okay.
And that says to consider request for plat approval to combine a 2.89 acre parcel with a 1.81 acre parcel into a single 4.70 acre lot at 9081 Highway 5, located in Land Lot 162, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0030. And 0038, application by Survey Technologies, care of Wyatt Howard. And Marcus Thompson is going to go over this item with us.
Okay.
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6695 Church Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. This new storage facility known as Silo Storage is located just south of Gurley Road, north of Rose Avenue. It sits to the right of the Georgia Farm Bureau. Well, it spans across two adjacent parcels under the same ownership, so this lot combination will basically ensure compliance with our standards, aligns utilities and access under one property and eliminates any legal or financial complications. So with that being said, staff recommends approval. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you for that, Marcus. I know, so I just wanted to clear up, they're not actually proposing any changes, just combining the two lots to clean it up.
That's correct.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, do we have any questions regarding this item? Okay. Are you guys comfortable with placing that on the consent? Beautiful.
Looks like it.
Okay. Marcus, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for Planning and Development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, City Engineer Thompson. We'll move on then to, Councilmember Miller, you have Public Improvements and Beautification Committee as well.
Yes, ma'am, I do, and we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Dr. Burdanley, Public Safety Committee.
No items tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Just back to you, Coach Watts, for Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight. To adopt a resolution recognizing and accepting the award of grant funding from the Georgia Recreation and Park Association, otherwise known as GRPA, Atlanta United, and the Author M. Blank Foundation in the amount of $1,308 to support accessibility and expansion of youth soccer programming within the city of Douglasville, affirming the city's support for enhancing recreational opportunities and youth engagement through soccer. Mr. Penn?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. City Douglasville Parks and Recreation Assistant Director, 7775 Jesse Davis Park Drive. So for this item, through our state agency, Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, they partner with Arthur M. Blank Foundation and also Atlanta United to provide funding through various agencies throughout the state, and we were able to be awarded for $1,308 to be able to expand the program for youth soccer.
Just like, how would that, how's that money going to help with, with our youth soccer program? Just kind of give us an example of that.
Yeah. So we'll be able to use this for some equipment and also to help out with scholarships as well, to be able to get more access for kids to be able to play.
Great. Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to ask to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. We'll move to item B. Thank you, Mr. Penn. Hang right there. Adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Douglasville Parks and Recreation Department to accept a donation from Guide Outreach to support the STEM Team After School Program, providing 15 solar-powered car kits that will enhance hands-on learning about solar power and renewable energy for youth ages seven to 11. Mr. Penn?
Yes. So Guide Outreach came and wanted to provide 15 solar-powered kits for our STEAM Team Program that happens every other Tuesday here at Jesse Davis Park to be able to provide and show the fundamentals of solar power and, you know, electricity to the kids. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions on this? Yes.
Just a comment. I think this is amazing, especially at seven-year-olds, when you see in kindergarten now, kindergarten first grade, they're teaching coding. So this is amazing. It's great.
I have a comment as well. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations, Mr. Penn. This is exciting.
Thank you. Thank you. We're excited to have it.
So how do you differentiate or choose the children if you have the 15 kits? Do they, is it like a rubric where you can do a study or how many, how do you choose the kids?
Yeah. So the kits, they come with all the tools and everything that's needed for them and has the instructions with them. So they'll actually be able to build it from ground up and see how, exactly how it works. And then we're going to have a little small solar power showcase for all the kids as well.
Okay. So they're just all share? So it's like, if they're 15 kits, you have more than 15 kids? I guess I was, didn't ask my question correctly. Like how many, how do you choose the kids to get a kit? Or does, they all just share them or how do we do that?
No. So they're outfits, so each kid will get a kit and then they do register for that program. So kids already register for the program.
Okay. That is really nice. Congratulations. You're bringing all this good news tonight. That's good. They're saying the other, the scholarship for soccer is really good, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Penn, for that presentation, and I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday also.
Looks like it goes.
All right. That's all we had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Coach, and thank you again to our Assistant Parks Director, Mr. Penn. We'll move on to Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. We have already talked about transportation. Councilmember Burdanley brought that forward. Do we have any other business from councilmembers this evening? Do you have something, Coach?
No, ma'am.
No? No announcements? Okay. I wanted to just do an FYI to the council. I'm part of the Metro Atlanta Mayor's Association. I'm the vice chair. We have a meeting coming up to talk about World Soccer. FIFA's coming to Atlanta. The dates are June 11th and they last through Sunday, July 19th. There are 34 games. The City of Atlanta is set to host eight of those games. My meeting with the metro mayors is next week. Once we get more information, I'll share with you, but they're really wanting to have the cities in the metro area look at our short-term housing and some other transportation to house the world that's coming to the City of Atlanta for FIFA, World Soccer. So once I get the update from the metro mayor's meeting next week, I'll share with you all and if we can try to, and just let you know what the expectation is for the cities that surround the metro area to get prepared for soccer, for World Soccer, the World Cup. So that's the only announcement that I had. I'm trying to think, we did something else. It was something at the police department. What do we just have? Deputy Chief?
You had the yard sale.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, when you, I'm sorry. I'll let you do that when I come to you, but I knew it was something going on with the police department. Okay. That's all the announcements that I had. So we'll move on to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Deputy Chief, J.R. Davison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Saturday, we have our Fall Festival from 10 to 4. So there's going to be vendors, bouncy houses, costume contests, canine demonstration, and a touch-a-truck event going on.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just to remind some of you all who will be taking upon the invite from our neighbor city, Harder Springs, from Mayor Thurmond, to visit their grand opening of their city hall. That's tomorrow morning at 8:30. So I'll see some of you all there. Also, just to keep in mind, as we are in the month of October, city hall will start to begin to look like a construction zone as we take materials and equipment from the current city hall into our temporary location, because we are reusing every piece of item that we can, including doors and doorknobs, to minimize expenditures. So we just pardon our progress, but we are within two and a half months of being into a temporary location. And we have executive session after this.
All right. Thank you, city manager. We do have our concert. Our last concert in the series for the fall is October 11th, which is next Saturday at 7:00 PM. It is DeGraw. Wait a bit.
Gavin DeGraw.
Gavin DeGraw. I knew it was, it reminds, it's another name that's very
Tim McGraw.
Tim McGraw. See, I know. I'm not crazy. Yes. So Gavin DeGraw, McGraw, DeGraw is next Saturday.
Yeah, I have Tim McGraw.
I was, if it was
It'll be above our budget.
I know. My daughter just saw him in Vegas. But yeah, so that is next Saturday at 7:00, and then we'll start back. Of course, we have the upcoming Jingle, what is it, Jason?
Jamboree.
Jingle Jamboree at Christmas time, and Chili Cook-Off. So there's some things going on in the fall. But next Saturday is the last concert in the series, and it should be a great time. And hopefully, I'm not certain if all the tickets are gone for the seniors, but if not, then they can come to city hall to pick up those tickets for the concert. So now we have the floor is open for comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, you have five minutes to talk to us about any business to remain to the city of Douglasville. You can come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and then you can address us, please, with any comments. Okay? No comments? All righty. If we don't have any other business to come before council, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss property acquisition after a brief recess. Open the floor for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's probably moved in second to adjourn to executive session to discuss property acquisition. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned to executive session to discuss a property acquisition after a brief recess. This meeting is adjourned.